All right. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to start with recognitions.
Yes, Ms. Hanlon.
Yes, sir.
Could you stand up for a second? I know you don't want to. All right. So I have the pleasure of speaking just for a couple of minutes this evening about our Chamber of Commerce Educator of the Year, Ms. Jan Hanlon, who is a school psychologist at Terrifield School, retiring in just a few days.
A couple hours.
A couple hours. There you go. So Jan, I just wanted to, a little story, but there was an event to celebrate this with the town. I know that Lydia went, you went, and Sulemki went. I was not feeling well, so I wasn't there to celebrate with you. And then we had the retiree dinner at the district, and you were not feeling well. So at least we get to meet one final time, Jan. But it's 18 years at Terrifield School, really, I would say, an illustrious 38-year career dedicating herself to kids and working with families. And Jan, I just want to thank you so much. When I think of Terrifield School, we all think of Jan Hanlon. There are three principals that have worked for Jan over the course of her 18 years, and I've got to know them all extremely well. The renowned character education program at Terrifield, Jan was really at the center of creating that plan, and other schools have picked up on those tenets over time, and it served as a great model. And I would just say this because Jan can't stand when people speak about her, so I know this is painful, and she's been a good sport. But coming into this year, we knew we were going to have our challenges, right? We knew that we were still in the pandemic, cases were rising, kids had different needs, staff had different needs. We came up with a motto, "All kids, all staff, always," and I can't think of anybody that epitomized that more than you, Jan. I've gotten to know you very well over the course of the past 18 years. You've been a treasure to the district, and I'm glad we could do this little thing for you on the way out because you really are a model for our younger staff in terms of commitment. You know, tongue-in-cheek about the principals, but really principals are as successful as the staff that they work with, and you set each one of them up for success. And I can't count or even think about the number of staff, students, and families that you've supported over the years at that wonderful school up on the Hill. So thank you very much, and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing it. You won't have to stay for the whole meeting.
I start to cough all day.
All right. We're going to move it to Sue for the McGowan Scholarship Awards.
Terrific. So as the board knows, we have the McGowan Educational Enhancement Fund that was established by the generous donation of Ms. Kathleen McGowan, who was an educator in the Simsbury Public Schools for over 35 years. And she left the Simsbury Public Schools a very generous gift, and the board has decided through this fund to utilize these dollars in different ways to support her legacy. And one of those ways is through offering each year five scholarships, one for a student who's attended each one of the elementary schools here in Simsbury. So we have a full committee that comes together, reads scholarship applications, and then decides upon those who would like to pursue their education in the field of education or a related field. So very excited that four out of the five recipients are here this evening. So when I call your name, if you can just stand and be recognized, that would be terrific. First, from Central School, Mina Rajish, who will be attending Purdue University next year. From Latimer Lane School, Alex Vargas, who will be attending Fordham next year. Next, a very familiar face to our board, as she was our rep, Olivia Antedormi. Olivia will be attending the University of New Hampshire next year, and she is receiving on behalf of Tooten Hills. And then finally, Michaela Fluster, who's going to be attending the University of Tennessee, and she is our squadron line rep. They shared very eloquently in their scholarship applications how they will use the funds to pursue their interests and their passion and give back and continue to be a legacy of Ms. Kathleen McGowan. So thank you very much. Graduates.
Congratulations to all of you.
High School.
Best of luck. We appreciate all your hard work, and we know you'll make us all proud. Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. Have a great night.
Well, I should have mentioned, thank you, Mr. Sullivan, that she wasn't able to be with us today, but from Terrifield School, Madison Rivera, who's attending the University of Vermont. So we can give Madison a round of applause, too. Thank you for that.
And now, finally, our yearbook editors. So we have Olivia Crichton and Maddie Pennell.
Hi.
Hi, all.
So we have four yearbooks to assorted people.
You could give them to Mr. Watson, and he'll make sure they get to the right people.
Sure.
Thanks.
Lydia.
It's me.
Sue. Matt. It's for you.
Sue's.
So we are two out of three of the yearbook editors this year. Charlotte Berliner couldn't make it today. But yeah, it was a really good process this year with the yearbook. We had a lot of fun with it, as you can see.
How many people just did that all day, right? It's hard to resist.
A few of them have come off, but you can just hack them back on.
That's crazy.
So yeah, we had a lot of fun with it. Usually, sometimes they're black, but we wanted to have a lot more colored. So we had a good time designing it, and it was really, I don't know what else to say. Our advisor, Mr. Nielsen, is retiring from yearbook, not from the school. And he had a really big part in the whole process throughout all four years of our time and just throughout the entire, I think this is his time for yearbook.
Wow. Were you girls working on yearbook all four years you were in the high school?
All six years.
All six.
Well, I didn't stay back, then all school.
Just checking.
Just in case.
High school is a four-year road. But we appreciate your sex. That's great.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much for coming and giving it to us. Hope you had a great time doing it, and we look forward to cruising through them all. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. The great seat swap now.
Funny, Erin.
Grab any seat? All right. So now we are on to public audience. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board?
Yes, it's me. Hello. Lori Boyko from 150 Kirst Road. I don't have a big speech tonight. I did want to just say a couple of quick things. So I looked through the agenda. Somebody really does read that in advance, Katie, even if it might just be me. And I noticed, I don't know if it was a motion or what, to not meet over the summer. I think that is typical board protocol. And as a Simsbury resident and school parent who is aware of many, many issues and controversial topics that are going on right now, I know everybody would really like to be done on the heels of the pandemic. But I'm going to ask, as a resident, that the board seriously consider meeting over the summer. I think there are a lot of things that need to be discussed that don't necessarily get to the table in the midst of the weekly presentations from the administration and also while school is going on and issues keep coming up. So I'm going to ask that. You consider that when you're voting about that tonight? I also have been observing that CAEB and the legislative priorities keep coming up in meetings, and we've heard about what the legislative outcomes have been, but not what our inputs as voting members to CAEB have been. And I would be very interested to know if CAEB is truly aligned with our priorities as a district when they're putting forward their recommendations for legislation. And it would be really good, as a member of the town, to hear more about what exactly CAEB is putting forward as their legislative priorities. I've done some research on their website, but I'd also like to hear, do we vote on, you know, as a board, do we vote on how our input is going to go into that priority process? I also wanted to point out that in the health class that I've talked about before, I've been trying to do a fair amount of research into where some of the material is coming from, and I'm curious whether the board approves, in addition to books, do they approve ancillary materials and look at some of the handouts in the curriculum? One of the topics that is being taught in depth in at least freshman health class is about there being indefinite genders. And all of the sources that I can find in the class material are from nonprofit organizations. None of them seem to be from scientific citations. So students are being taught that there are infinite genders as a social construct a year before they've even had high school biology. So they really have no appropriate foundation to be equipped to analyze critically what they're being taught. And I'm not quite sure what they're being taught has been established as fact. I think it's being talked about in the freshman health class as if it's established fact, but I think if we even surveyed the people in the room, we would find there was a fair amount of controversy about whether that actually is a fact or not. So those are some of the things that I would like to ask the board to consider and look at and answer at some point. And I would just, there's only four or five meetings that we would have over the summer if we continued throughout the summer. I realize there are vacations, but there's, you know, not every board member is here every week, and I'd like the summer off, too, but I kind of feel like we need to keep talking. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just as a point of information, as we go through the summer, we do hold special meetings as needed when things come up. There are also central office administration retreats and a board retreat as well. So it's not that we are not talking over the summer, we just don't follow our regular every-other-Tuesday meeting schedule. So all those meetings would be noticed as appropriate.
But they're not public?
Not retreats, but...
If we do a special meeting, it would be public.
A special meeting is public, as any other meeting would be. Okay. Anybody else for public audience? Okay. With that, we are on to committee reports and Board of Ed Communications. Mr. Watson.
So no committee reports. Just quickly, want to say, you know, Friday night graduation was fantastic. A few of us were there, obviously. It was great for me. I got to give my son his diploma. And I also noticed, like, this year, it seemed like, I was talking to my son, Tim, about it, a lot of kids are going to, like, universities, University of Vermont, University of New Hampshire, Penn State, Clemson, Auburn. It just caught me, I thought it was kind of cool, like, the year of the university, you know? It seems like when I grew up, it was like everyone was going to small liberal arts colleges, et cetera. Now it's like they all are going to the big universities. I thought that was really, really cool. So, yeah, it was a great night.
It really was. It was a beautiful night, and our high school does a really great job with graduation. And I actually got complimented from a former administrator in Granby, whose granddaughter was at graduation, and she appreciated our lack of beach balls. So, Lyd.
Sure. Just quickly, tomorrow is, will be the last CREG Council meeting for the year, and I have been attending various graduations from early childhood to elementary to middle to high school, and also the continuing adult graduations because CREG also provides services for our adult students. So that will be tomorrow. And then recently, I teched the CAEB collective bargaining workshop, and so we had discussed Britchman Moses, one of the law firms that we contract with, was there and presided over this. And as I mentioned before during the legislature, which is now concluded, that there was Senate Bill 1, which was a very, very important bill, and that got under the radar at the last final hour, just before the stroke of midnight, and that was the mental health bill. So there were many pieces that were meshed into Senate Bill 1. And one of them, that is probably a really very important bill, is the guarantee of 30-minute uninterrupted lunch for teachers. And Matt has spoken about that before, and Neil, and that is something that did get done there, but it is something that we are going to be taking much focus upon throughout the state as this progresses forward. So that is the one piece on that bill, and then, of course, there are many other pieces on that mental health bill that will be coming forward, starting July 1st, starting October 1st, starting January 1st, and of course, starting for next school year. The other is, we talked very greatly about the labor shortage, which is even impacting even more so. So we've all experienced labor shortage in all our districts in a number of different areas, from areas to transportation, to cafeteria, to teacher shortage. So that was one area. And the other is the health insurance trends and strategies. After COVID, after the two years of COVID, Shippman Goodman presented a very informative workshop about that and what are some of the trends that are going to be happening that we need to be prepared for as we move forward within the next year, especially under the auspices of a lot of the mental health pieces. So this was the workshop, and it kind of gave a little bit of insight of what we're going to be experiencing moving into the next year within these areas. So that is, that's my report.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a couple more updates. So another aspect of the Kathleen McGowan Educational Enrichment Fund is also to support innovative grants from our teaching and staff. So on May 2nd, the Grant Committee also came together to review applications for innovative ways that educators want to do some different kinds of projects in the community. And that committee awarded nine different grants in the total of about $23,000 for some pretty exciting new kinds of ideas. So if anyone would like particulars about what those grants are, I'd be happy to provide you those details, but certainly wanted to share that. You also might have seen that Henry James was in the news, specifically their family in consumer science eighth-grade classes, who came together to create some teddy bears in their family in consumer science class, and they created over 40 stuffed animals and presented them to our school resource officers. And our Simsbury police officers are going to be keeping them in their cruisers, and then when they are on calls where there might be a kid who's distraught and needs a little extra TLC, they'll hand him one of the bears from the Henry James students. So thought that was very cool to share with you. And then finally, at our last board meeting, I had mentioned that our students in career in tech ed were up for some nominations for Fox Student News, and they were awarded the 2022 Challenge to Educational Citizenship Award for their Penethon piece. So just want to say congratulations to those students as well.
Great. Wonderful.
Yeah, when we go through the Personnel Exhibit at each meeting, it's about certified staff, but it's, we, your bylaws don't require actions for non-certified staff in most, but occasionally, we have a retirement that's worth mentioning because it's somebody that faces the public in a really robust way. And I know the Tooten Hills community wants to congratulate Lori Blomberg, who will be taking her retirement at the end of this school year. Lead secretary at Tooten Hills for a long time, has taken great care of that school and broken in a few principles over the years, and we just want to congratulate Lori on a well-earned retirement.
That's great. Very nice. Wonderful. Thank you.
Amy. Also, thanks.
Mr. Curtis.
I'm also.
All right. Then we are moving on to recommended actions. So approval of the minutes of the May 23 special meeting. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make the motion to approve the meeting, the special meeting of May 23, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain, Katie. May 24 meeting. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll move that.
Can I get a second?
A second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Carrie's. Personnel. Mr. Sullivan.
So here are our certified folks. Two resignations to begin with tonight. The first is Leisha Cryer, who has served mostly in our district as a school psychologist at Tooten Hills, but is now in the position of Special Ed Department Supervisor. Leisha has a less than one-year-old child at home and is deciding it's time to take a step back from those responsibilities, so her resignation is effective at the end of this month. In addition, Morgan Pierce, who was a teacher at Central School that we hired last summer. She did a great job, and it just wants to take some time to kind of assess the next step for herself. But hopefully, Morgan will make a long-term decision to stay in education because we'd be interested in having her back. She did a great job if that's the choice she makes. So if I could have someone move those two items.
Move that the Board of Education accept the resignations of Leisha Cryer and Morgan Pierce, effective June 30, 2022.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
And then two retirements to talk about tonight. The first is one of the motions where it's based on an incentive in the teacher's contract that they can announce three years in advance, and it helps us with our planning to know succession planning related to retirees. So Chris Medve, who is a PE and health teacher at Henry James, has been with us for 22 years, many more in Torrington before that, so it'll be 25 in Simsbury by the time he's done. He has coached a slew of sports for us. I mean, he has coached football, tennis, track, basketball, baseball. I mean, he is really connected in the athletic department as well, and we congratulate Chris, but he's got three more years to put in. So if we can make that motion...
I'll move the Board of Education accept the notice of intent to retire of Chris Medve, effective June 30, 2025.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then the retirement for the end of this school year in our school counseling department. Pam Sickinger has done 23 years at Simsbury High School as a school counselor, including thank you to the Sullivan children who had Pam as a school counselor as we went through that school, and just someone who has, just really gets the big picture of what high school is about, and I think is a really trusted voice for both kids and a trusted voice for parents, too. So Pam is going to be doing some other adjunct teaching that she's been interested in pursuing. So we are eager to congratulate her and see her move on to something new. So congratulations to Pam.
Can I get a motion?
Sure. Move that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Pamela Sickinger, effective June 30, 2022.
A second? Any discussion?
Well, the Tadone children also had both Chris Medve and Pam Sickinger, so, as I think most of are. So we do thank them for their years of service and being with our children.
Absolutely. All those in favor?
Aye.
Best of luck to Pam in her retirement. Well deserved. Superintendent's contract. Todd.
Okay, that's me. So as the chair of the Personnel Negotiations Committee, I get to talk about this, but this is a very collaborative process. Little bit about this, since we're talking about meetings and stuff, most of the Personnel Negotiations meetings, because of the nature of what we're talking about, aren't public. But a lot of time gets spent. We talk about contracts, union negotiations. And with the superintendent's review, we spend a lot of time together as a board and together with Matt to just kind of go over, we do it now twice a year. We do it in January, kind of mid-year, how are things going? And then again, a much more comprehensive process at the end of the year, going through the district goals and individual goals and just the things that we just want to talk about. And again, as chair, I get to, I get the pleasure of just telling everyone how fortunate we are as a community and as a board to get to work with Matt, as well as his team. But the leadership that he presents and the openness, I know that as a board member, there's never a time that I don't feel comfortable reaching out and I feel comfortable getting answers. And I know that from people in the community, Matt is always open to talking to people as well, to make sure they understand what's going on beyond just what you see at the meetings. So I thank Matt for all of the hard work, and I'm thrilled that he's here. And I'm going to recommend in the notes, in the motion, I don't know if anybody, I'll move and then...
You're going to make the motion, yes.
I would love to make the motion. I'm going to move that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's contract for 2022-23 with a salary increase of 2.5% for 2023.
Can I get a second?
I will.
I'll second it.
Anybody else want a third hit?
I'll third it.
Okay, there we go. Any discussion?
Agree 100% with what Todd said. We're lucky to have Matt.
We are. We recognize that. It's been a difficult time, and you have been steadfast, and we appreciate that.
I appreciate your support. Thank you.
All right. With that, we have to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously passes. Thank you, sir. You're stuck with us for another...
Right.
Lucky you. Textbook adoption.
Great. That's back to me. So at the last Board of Ed meeting, I had shared with you per our textbook recommendation and adoption process, a series of texts that are explained in the exhibit. And tonight, unless you have any questions, there is a motion for your consideration of those texts.
Any questions for Sue before we...
I just want to say, Sue, thank you very much, as always, for sharing the proposed textbooks with the board before we adopt this evening. It's always, it's always very educating and interesting to see what the district will be utilizing in textbooks from K through 12, but obviously, this year is 9 through 12.
Thank you. All right. Can somebody make a motion, please?
I'll make it. Move that the Board approve the textbook adoption for the 2022-23 school year as submitted by administration.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? I appreciated the fact that you tied the textbooks to the units. It was really helpful to read that in the exhibit, so thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
With that said, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Policy revisions.
Yeah, we're ready to vote after this has gone through its readings. The alcohol, tobacco, and drug-free workplace policy came to our attention, actually, through a contract review. That's kind of what brought it to the forefront, so it's a personnel policy and needed to be updated based on Connecticut's laws and changes due to cannabis and needed, it needed a modernization. So it got that, and it's been through the process with the Policy Committee, through the readings. Nobody has contacted me, so it should be ready for vote tonight.
Okay. Motion, ma'am?
Move to adopt the revised Board of Education policies, as noted, effective June 14, 2022.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion of the policy? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And end-of-year fiscal authorizations.
Amy.
Looking at me. Okay, so this is your annual end-of-year authorizations for our state grants, our fund transfers, and then our hiring. So that first motion is for all of our state and federal grants, all of the ones that expire as of June 30, 2022. We need to reapply for for fiscal year '23, so that's giving us permission to go ahead and do so. The transfers of the funds, as you know, as we've talked about, some of the deficit transportation, for example, is over budget, but then we have other line items that are under budget. So it's...
Looking me. Okay, so this is your annual end-of-year authorizations for our state grants, our fund transfers, and then our hiring. So that first motion is for all of our state and federal grants, all of the ones that expire as of June 30th, 2022. We need to reapply for fiscal year '23, so that's giving us permission to go ahead and do so. The transfers of the funds, as you know, as we've talked about, some of the deficit transportation, for example, is over budget, but then we have other line items that are under budget. So it's just giving us permission to move in between those accounts to offset. This does not address the deficit. You all took care of that at the last meeting. It's just to zero out the overages and underages of the other accounts. And then the last one is to give permission for us to start the hiring process for the fiscal year '23 school year.
And we need these read into the record.
Yes.
All right, I'll take the first one. I'll move that the Simsbury Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to act as the Board's agent in renewing applications for state and federally funded programs.
Can I get a second, please? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next.
You go.
Yep, please.
I'll move that the Simsbury Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to transfer funds from those accounts in which a surplus is anticipated into those accounts in which a deficit is anticipated.
I'll second that one.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And finally?
Okay. I will move that the superintendent, with the approval of the Board Chair, be authorized to hire staff for the 2022-23 school year during the period of July and August when the Board is not in session. A second.
Any discussion there? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now the Board of Education's summer meeting schedule. So as I said, after public comment, we generally cancel the meetings for the regularly scheduled second and fourth Tuesdays. And we'll call meetings as needed. So if I can get a motion to cancel this regularly scheduled meetings.
Move that the Board of Education cancel regular board meetings scheduled on July 12th, July 26th, August 9th, and August 23rd, 2022.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All right, so that is... All those in favor?
Aye.
Do have a meeting on the 28th.
We do have a special meeting on June 28th, yes. That's our... Oh, sorry. It's our regularly scheduled meeting. But it will be virtual. Okay. All right. And now we are on to informational reports.
Yes. So I am going to invite Dr. Tyresha Bachelor up to the table to present. So Tyresha, as you know, is our Director of Equity and Access. Just wrapping up her first year with us and the Board was interested in updating her work. So Tyresha's here tonight to kind of work us through a presentation and the way she has organized it. As a member of the Teaching and Learning Team, just like the other presentations we have had, she will align her updates with the strategic goal. So she'll talk about student growth and success, building our premier workforce, and really taking a look at developing a compassionate and connected school culture. So those are the three goals we've put before the Board over the course of the year. And Tyresha, we kind of worked through, we call them buckets, right? Worked through the buckets of her presentation. And she has quite a few slides. So the way we've organized it tonight is after each kind of bucket, we'll pause for any questions that people have. That way, we figured it would flow, allow her to go section by section, and then give people an opportunity to organize their thoughts and ask any questions that they have. So welcome.
Thank you.
Can I just say, thank you so much for the chitchat.
You're welcome.
That was great.
Brilliant.
So we appreciate that.
The floor is yours.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share the first year. So I will go slow and of course, I welcome your questions. So I'm going to start with grounding myself in the work. As Superintendent Curtis mentioned, the three goals that I primarily focused on this year was student growth and success, compassionate and connected school culture, and of course, the premier workforce. So this is my roadmap for the work that was done this year. I'm sure you recognize the goals. And I want you to pay close attention to at the top, before the strategies, and looking at who the population is. So many times people ask me, what does equity and access mean? So I have to specify that we're looking at all students having access to opportunities. We're looking at all members of Simsbury Public Schools being valued for their uniqueness and perspectives, and all staff engaging in meaningful professional development. So the strategies are here and it's embedded throughout the work. So the big buckets of the work, there's four categories. First, teaching and learning. I am a part of the awesome teaching and learning team. And so, you know, equity...
Thank you for throwing awesome in there, Ty.
Definitely awesome. So this just categorizes the work into these buckets. Remember, equity work is not siloed, so it lives in all of these spaces. But I'm going to particularly talk about these four buckets this evening. So here's just a graph to just show where equity lives and the five-year goals. So you'll see in the circles, we have the four sections of the five-year goals that I was focusing on this year. And in black, you'll see where the four buckets live. So I just want to pinpoint a couple of yay hurrahs that we accomplished this year in each area. So when we talk about compassionate and connected school culture, that's all climate. And so some of the things that we did is we worked on the Equity Week, engagement forums, and the climate survey. So those all fall under that bucket. If we look at equity indicators under sustainable and strategic investments, there's three here. Most importantly, starting with the Equity Council. In addition to my roadmap, I was very careful to embed the work that the Equity Council already had done. Great work in terms of already identifying some of the next steps. And so the work there was how do we sustain some of the practices? How do we take a closer look at what some of the barriers are and the roadblocks? And looking at the premier workforce, this year, starting an affinity group, minority recruitment, and of course, professional development. So here's the alignment with the Equity Council's recommendation. So the Equity Council recommendations and the principals, one pager, data dives, all of the work is connected. But I just wanted to give you some information about the data and the research that also has going into some of the decision-making and some of the strategies that we're focusing on. So there's two powerful books. And the reason why I like the books, the one on the right, Building Equity, is more of looking at the technical work. And on the left, Street Data, it looks at more of the application. So my focus again this year was on root causes, not big data quick fixes, but really looking at what is it that we're talking about when we're talking about engagement? What do we need for all students? And so I just pulled out a couple of pages from these books. The minority recruitment, if you look at page 41 in Street Data, that gives you a great roadmap to what other districts are doing, what have been some of the pitfalls, what are some things to look for? So not reinventing the wheel, but looking at what matches our population.
How to use the wheel for you.
Yes. How to make it work in our wheelhouse. And then on page 99, for overrepresentation of Black and Hispanic males in special education, some great research and looking at how to really do data dives and to look at just not the quantitative, but also qualitative data. And on the right, for Building Equity, that's a great resource for looking at increasing access to honors and AP courses, professional learning, and decreasing student referrals for students with ADHD. So again, this is just some resources with some great research and people that are already doing this practice, this work.
And Ty, if I may, you bring up those data points because the overrepresentation in special ed, the number of increasing referrals and the number of students accessing honors and AP, those were data points that our Equity Council kind of unearthed in their data dive that we saw as an area to delve into more specifically here in Simsbury and our community.
Thank you. And my teaching and learning team members are here too, so I invite them to pop in at any time. Please pop in. So under the bucket of teaching or learning, the terms again are there, but this is just some examples of what that looks like working with teaching and learning team. Professional learning. So professional learning is not just sitting in front of a presenter and receiving information. Professional development is meeting a thought partner for staff and parents and also mentoring students. But I did categorize it again into four buckets in terms of where I spent the most of my time working on professional learning. So that is restorative practices, culturally responsive curriculum and instruction, equity indicators, and social emotional learning. Now, to just give you some idea of what that means, where I spent my time and who I spent it with, I've also included a graph. So in terms of where I spent the most of my time in professional learning, it was definitely with certified staff, 39%. Then with the administrators. And working with administrators then gives you access to work with the teachers. So non-certified, 9%. And then PL cycles, and a PL cycle... Thank you. Now you're really going to get me. And so a PL cycle, as in the exhibit, encompasses the teacher who is working on a special project and the teachers determine what they would like to focus on. So that's where my time was spent, when they didn't see me in my office.
So I'm sorry, PL cycles, is that like a team of teachers that you're working with?
Yeah, so it's a professional learning cycle where it could be...
So like a professional learning community, the PLCs we've always talked about?
Yes, it can be. And I will definitely can go into it in more detail. But it is different than one professional learning because it's a cycle. So it's me coming multiple times. It's us being able to talk about the data and then going back to check and see what's working, what isn't working. It's us doing some of the research together. So it's a longer period of time spending on a specific topic. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So equity indicators. When we think about equity indicators, we have to explore student topics. And one way that we're doing that is through the connect period and through Equity Week. So Equity Week was definitely an artifact that I want to talk about in terms of not just students, but also staff. So this required teachers to take a look at equity within their discipline and to decide on some things that they would want to help the students to present. This year, we made sure to get some feedback from the students. The students have a great voice. And let me actually just move to that data. So shout out to Rebecca Saltzman and Carol Weiser because they were the co-chairs. We offered 71 sessions and 714 students took their survey. So within the survey, what we found was that sessions filled up quickly. Students had some trouble deciding which to select. So those were good problems to have. And students provided a list of ideas. So we do have a list from Student Voice in terms of how can we make equity work? How can we make equity work be the combination of what we did all year or things that we've learned and not just one event? Similar to what we're looking for when we talk about having equity with some of our monthly events. So the students really give us great feedback for some next steps. We're also looking at how we can bring other people into a committee and make sure that we are including all students and all voices. So I'm going to pause for a moment to see if there's any questions before I get excited about climate.
On that surveys, the 714 students that were surveyed, are those students that we targeted and said, just you, 714? Or you were offered it to the whole school and that's what we got back?
Yes, those were the... So the seniors were very busy in programs and getting ready for senior activities. So I did have a listening tour with seniors to get their idea of what would be great for next year. I also asked them, what would you say to the teachers now that you're leaving? Will it be different than when you were a sophomore or a junior? The reason why I was really interested to get the perspective of the sophomores and juniors, those are the ones that I really pushed when I saw that they weren't completing it, is because they're going to be here again next year. And so in order to really reengage them, I want to make sure that we have their voice and we're addressing some of their needs.
I think it would be great to share the survey results because it'd be interesting to see what those students that you surveyed, the 714, what they have, you know, written and put down. As you mentioned, that you interviewed them or surveyed them from what sophomore and junior year. So it'd be very interesting to see.
And some of the big buckets were the big questions, the findings. Let's go back.
Oh, you got it.
Was it on that chart?
Is it on the chart?
It's on that chart.
Yeah, you see it on the chart.
And this is specific to the topics because as we think about engagement and offering students topics of equity that the students have interest in and also have some understanding. We really wanted to get their voice. And again, the problems that we have were great problems. We also asked quite technical questions. Was it easy for you to sign up? Was that difficult? So those questions were asked also. These are the questions that would help us to determine, what do we have to do throughout the year in terms of understanding equity for the staff and the students so that this can be a meaningful event for all of them? But we did ask those technical questions about the process as well.
Excuse me. Is there a non-watered-down version of what Equity Week was about? Because I feel like there really wasn't any transparency. I tried looking it up and nowhere.
Excuse me, ma'am. So this is really for the Board to question? If you have some questions, a public audience who are more than welcome to? No, no, this is really an exchange between the Board and staff. So if you want to make note of your questions, you're welcome to ask them, a public audience. I can't promise you we'll have answers for you, but someone would circle back.
Stand corrected, sorry.
Okay.
And then I just had one more question on that first chart, page seven. The decreasing student referrals for students with ADHD. We're seeing less of those or we're just saying we want to see less of them?
We want to see less because there's an overrepresentation of students being identified in that disability category, specifically males of color.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you. So next, climate and culture. So engagement is an equity indicator. I use the word engagement a lot. We've done forums around engagement. We're thinking about re-engaging. How do we re-engage our entire school community? So in looking at engagement, it tells us how our students are doing, how all of our students are doing. It describes the quality of their involvement and their guaranteed experiences and also their sense of belonging. So when looking at culture, that was the beginning. That's where we started. And I want to share some information that came from our forum summaries. I'm going to start with terms and phrases that were widely used. So some of the words that came up quite often was work, grades, activities, stress level, or social emotional learning. And you can see it was different for parents, students, and staff. But those were terms that were widely used from all groups. So we looked at engagement and what we found was that engagement can be two different things. We're looking at engagement in terms of completion of tasks and participation and a sense of belonging in the school community. Disengagement as a symptom of a stressor that may not be related to school environment was something that might be a barrier that's impacting the ability for some students to engage. So those were some of the notices that came out of the engagement forums.
So Ty, just to set a little bit of framework. So you may recall that in Communications and List Serves, Ty kind of shared that she wanted to meet with parents, right? And to have these forums. I want to say they happened in December. Am I recalling that correctly? And then people could come to these forums and she had a set of questions to ask and dialogue to happen. Repeated those forums with staff and repeated those forums with both middle school and high school students, should they choose to participate. So these are some of the outcomes of those forums and what it tells us about engagement. And we're looking for engagement of all students. So I think that that really resonated with me when you shared that engagement is an equity indicator, right? Are all students engaged? How do we know? How do we get more information about that? So Ty's listening tours started that process.
Terrific.
So the other ways that we receive information about climate and culture, again, thank you, through the listening tours. And a listening tour is basically talking, hearing people's perspective and their experiences. Some things that you don't necessarily get by just looking at the data. We've included high school mediation groups, a middle school mentorship, student survey, choice parent meetings, and then of course, our follow-ups.
With the listening tours, would you throw out a question? Were they directed or...? I'm just curious how that worked.
So with a listening tour, some of the topics came directly from the principals. So whether it was something that the teachers wanted more information on or something that they were working on for a PLC, a principal would say, these are the things that we're working on, these are the conversations that we're having. And so another way to get that information is to have... And so, another way to get that information is to have a listening tour and be at the table, and allow people to talk about whatever topic that they have. And then it helps the principal and I to determine professional development, to provide books for a PLC, to think about some of the next steps. So a listening tour is really just that, listening to what people have to say, and providing the next steps based on what we're hearing. So with professional development, we talked about professional learning, which is ongoing. There is also some professional development in terms of looking at spaces to begin having people think outside of the box. That's what the equity work is, looking at how do we engage everyone? How do we ensure that everyone has access to the great experiences? And so some of the things that we've worked on this year is the minority affinity group, a minority recruitment team. And I've looked at two models, Meriden and Farmington. So the why is because, one, Meriden has been in session for a long time, and they had some great outcomes, especially in looking at recruitment, not just of minority recruitment, but just in teachers in general, as we have this mass exodus of teachers leaving. And then Farmington Public Schools, because they have a similar demographic, and they have two affinity groups. One affinity group is Hispanics, and the other is more global. So making sure that we're using, again, the right model that could match our district. And then interest, so we had eight initial surveys, and we're gonna be more formal and invite more people in year two.
And that minority affinity group is an adult group?
It is, an adult group for staff. Engaging staff, and this equity work is just important as planning for the teachers. In fact, I think that you have to do that both at the same time. So as you see teachers engaging and understanding, and developing their terminology and understanding of what is our vision? When we say equity, what are we talking about for our district? What is it that we want for all students?
Are you also engaging the non-certified staff, the power professionals in the building?
Yeah, so we've had, I've had two meetings with the non-certified staff, and they were also invited to a forum, and we did have some attendance for them as well. So for equity indicators, there's several that we found so far. One is through the recruitment fairs, looking at how do we recruit talented staff to come and to sustain the staff that we have? Second, we've updated the invitation to apply. So I've worked with Neil, who does a great job of recruitment. And then, our recruitment team has four members, and I've attended conferences working with the state DEI team on the Connecticut teacher shortage. So what I'm looking at is, part of the reason why there is a shortage is geographic. And so, getting people to come to Connecticut is not always easy. So like, instead of us alone trying to compete for the same ten people that are coming to Connecticut, let's look at ways where we could talk about housing, transportation, and things that people would want to come to Connecticut for, and do that work together. But I am not opposed to stealing people from.
Neither am I.
Start playing fair, but you know.
But the percentage of overall, in the state, minority teachers is extremely low. Like only eleven percent of the teachers in the state are minority teachers. So, to be able to get a large pool of minority teachers into a very suburban district, it's just a numbers challenge that you're up against.
What about in the school, in the colleges, the education programs?
They have just started putting pressure specifically on the UConn and the other state universities to, you know, help solve the problem at its root by bringing more minority candidates into teacher education programs. And UConn did not have a very good record on that front, and they have really challenged the NEAG School of Education over the last few years. And I do think that when we go to the UConn fair down the road, we're going to see a different population than has been there in the past.
And also, what do we have that's different than other districts? Well, we have a mentorship. We have people that are here, happy, successful. And so, those are the things that the minority recruitment team are working on, to make sure that we show how inviting our community really is. A quick pause for more Q and A from the board.
Anyone else? I think we're interrupting you, so we're killing the Q and A.
This is fine, this is fine.
Okay. I know, we're not good at waiting.
You have two affinity groups, you said?
We only have enough staff right now for one, but.
Farmington has two.
They have two, they have two. So that's, we eventually would like to pair off. And even in thinking about membership, like how are we defining affinity? How do people self-identify? And so that is part of what we're doing as a group. Is it just people of color? Is it people who have, who present ethnically? So, you know, we want to leave it open. I want to make sure that everyone is welcome, and if you need support and you would like an affinity group, let's have one. But as of now, we have enough membership for one. When we recruit more people from out of state, then we will have two. So one of the teams, this is one of the committees that I sit on, the Teaching and Learning Recommendation Review Committee, and the chair is Amanda Torina Quendici. And I have to give all the credit to her. But, in this group, what we've looking at is the policy and practice for recommendations and overrides. So we've talked about an equity indicator being access to honors and AP courses. And we're looking at not just the barriers to address the variability and recommendations, but also what do we have to offer? What AP courses do we offer? Why do students who could possibly be enrolled in these courses either choose not to? So again, looking at root causes and barriers, not just looking at the numbers, because they tell two different stories. Some students absolutely could be in these courses. But we want to make sure that they have the support, they have the resources, and that the teachers have a protocol and practice to help support the students and the families. So, I will share some of the work. So, Mrs. Lumke is always saying, "We must look for pathways and on-ramps." So I hear that in my head, and when I'm in the committee meetings, when I'm in my vertical teams, I'm always asking, "So, what is the ramp? What's the pathway? And what is the pathway for specific students?" So, when people ask what the roadmap looks like, I go back again to my, to the five-year goals. But the teachers are also looking at course selection, looking at coursework, looking at how they engage parents and understanding where students go and why. And so, here's some information looking at juniors. So the class, when it says the class of twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, those are students that are graduating at that point. But we looked at their junior year, and we've had an increase, a small increase, a slight increase. So, we're not taking credit for the increase yet, but at least we're coming to the table with the right questions, and developing the process that the counselors will use to increase the amount of students enrolling in the courses.
Do we know yet if there's an uptick for this incoming junior class in enrollment?
Not as yet, but we also have a new course. So I wanted to survey the students in terms of, "Did you know about the course? Ask the parents, did you know about the course? Why would you select this course over another?" So again, those listening tours are great avenues for me, because sometimes you have to, having the right question to ask is just as important as getting the data. So the listening tours allows me to, informs the questions. Even the way that we drafted our questions for the survey that people are taking now. And if you have a student and you haven't taken it, please check for the email and take that survey. But that's how we know what questions to ask, and then to develop some of our next steps.
Have you gotten answers and feedback from people that are actionable? Or you, is it, you need to wait a little bit more just to make sure that there's enough feedback?
We have received some feedback, but again, we have to receive more feedback. So the feedback is helping us to ask more questions and to look a little bit more closely. But we have seen that the counselors now have a different roadmap to asking questions for students. And we also have to slow down the process, because we want to make sure that as we move students into the courses, that students are successful, that they feel successful.
We don't want them to just go in and be frustrated either.
So the Equity Council, we've identified three prioritized areas of focus for measuring our progress. So again, the Equity Council have, they've already done the great work of identifying some of the concerns. And now we're looking at root causes, and also we're looking at, so how, what does it look like when it's in process? So we may not have achieved all of the goals, but how do we know that we're making some of the right steps towards it? And so, we've selected three. One is creating the systems and structures for ongoing analysis of the data. And again, that is an example of taking a look here and then looking at, how do, what do we do for course enrollment and recommendation? So that's an example of taking a look at this and then unpacking it. The second is providing implicit bias training for all teachers and staff members with fidelity. And I learnt very quickly that fidelity has to start with a building-based fidelity. What we have for middle school students is completely different than what we have for high school students when we're talking about professional development. So making sure that it matches, the students are in front of you, and then providing culturally responsive training for staff members in order to aid in developing cultural competence and educating all children. So, these were things that were already lifted in the Equity Council's recommendation, and now we're trying to look at, so what are some of those indicators so that we'll know that we're hitting the right marks? So now my year ahead, so I'm always thinking about where does, where does my work show up in the data? What are my measurable goals, and what am I working on next? So, here are some of the recommendations and what I'm gonna be working on next year. Identifying equity indicators that address engagement across groups, looking at all groups, looking at the research on the connection between the student engagement and achievement, working closely with leaders to organize the existing SEL components into a cohesive district-wide structure. We have great structures at each grade level, but now we're trying to bring it together so that we can present a K-12 that everyone understands, and make sure that the high school principals and teachers are speaking a similar language to middle schools, that as students progress, we can explain what we're doing for social emotional learning. Using the referral data as a baseline to identify trends. So being very careful and cautious not to just look at this year's data, because we know coming out of the pandemic, things were different. For SEL, we had to make some changes, some students needed more time to adjust. So being very cautious in looking at data. So I do want to celebrate some pockets where we made great achievements, but if I can't tell you exactly how we did it so we can replicate it, then we're gonna study it a little bit more. And I would love to create a community calendar with PTOs. So I have gone to visit a few PTOs, and they're ready. And that just helps us to be more inclusive. I don't know what I don't know. And so, working together with the PTO, I think, will be a great opportunity for us to lift the cultural calendars. Again, looking at guiding the Curriculum Review Committee, and providing more opportunities to increase engagement of all stakeholders. Meaning, I'm gonna be talking with parents, talking with students, sustaining the work of the Equity Council, and I think definitely sharing my experiences in my new home. I always say, "My new home, Simsbury." I do feel a strong sense of belonging. I'm on the Teaching and Learning Team, the members came here, and so we are doing this work together. So I thank you for allowing me to share some of my buckets, and if there are any other questions.
I just want, your slides were fantastic. The style, it's like, you know, you've got the bubbles on the bottom saying, "Okay, this is what I'm supposed to get out of it," so make sure that when I'm reading it. It was very effective, thank you.
I want to just point out the different pictures of the one of myself and the backlighting of Dr. Ratchler. We'll have to, you know, she said, "Give me another picture." I said, "It's fine, it's fine, we look youthful."
We're gonna work on your thought bubbles.
We will, we'll work on my thought bubbles.
On the slide, page twenty, I think it is, or nineteen, the expected enrollment buckets, how do you determine "expected"? Did I miss that? There's little tiny writing underneath there, but I cannot see it.
So it's based on the percentage of the population. So based on the population of the black students, the, this is the slide that you're talking about? So based on the number of students that you have in your population, and based on how many students have already been enrolled in these courses, you can predict how many you should have. Now, we're not the only district.
It's an enrollment base.
Based on Simsbury's enrollment, like historically, we've had five percent, or historically, the state has seen five percent of this population in this class.
If five percent of your population is black students, your AP courses should have five percent of those students in. Like, it shouldn't be only one percent.
So five percent of the total population should be enrolled to mirror your population.
Exactly, exactly. So that's how you have projections, and although we haven't met the projection for the black students, we've come close to, closer than we have in previous years. So if you look at the top, the class of twenty-twenty-one, there was one student. And again, I wanted to put the percentages, because if there are only eight students, then I wouldn't want to put the number. But in the yellow, you can see where there is movement, there is an increase.
Taya, I just wanted to, you know, you mentioned engagement several times throughout the presentation, and I think that's important. And in a year or even a two-year period as a district, and we've talked about this at quite a few public meetings, where so much of our communication to parents and staff has been push communication around protocols and procedures and COVID, and much more informative. We need to think about ways to get more pull communication. And a lot of your work this year, Boots on the Ground, I thought was great in terms of reaching out to parents, getting some pull communication, working with staff, getting some pull communication. So that idea of engagement, as we launch next year, you're going to continue to hear about that. We're gonna message that with parents. We've sent a survey out. I think that information will be important to get back in terms of climate and culture and what we're looking at, and what our next moves are. But a lot of that is cued off of this work. And I just kind of want to make that connection as we move forward as, in a district. So, thank you.
Will we see the results of, I don't know who to ask, the surveys that are coming from the schools? Will we get that in the fall, or will that?
Yeah, we're gonna work with principals at the retreat on that, and then we will do a presentation of that data and bring it back to the board. Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great presentation, very, very informative, after a year's worth of work. Thank you.
Can I just ask you, is there anything, any other support you might need from us to move your work? Or are you getting what you need from us as a board?
I am getting what I need from the board, but I'm really getting what I need from my team. Being a part of a Teaching and Learning Team, I think, is important. The structure that you have, I go to DEI meetings once a month with DEI directors from the state. And one of the reasons why people don't stay in the position is because it's lonely, and the work is siloed, and it's like, you're the person responsible for equity. But the way that you have the structure here, it's, equity is everyone. It encompasses everything that we're doing. It's always looking at, from an equity standpoint, are all kids, we say all kids, are all kids and all staff getting what they need, and having access so that they can, you know, have these great opportunities. So the way that it is structured in terms of Teaching and Learning, like I, I'm not working alone. Maggie and I work on the survey together. Katie comes in with her lens and says, you know, "You might want to tweak this." And so, it is a part of a team, and that's the real type of equity work. And then of course, we have great leaders who give us feedback and support us. So, yes, yes, so support it and that I can do the work.
We're glad to hear, and we appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we are back to our second public audience. Anybody who'd like to speak?
Hello, I am Lori Boyko from fifteen Oakhurst Road. Quickly, I wanted to mention, for anybody that does have a junior or a senior that is ending their year having taken a class, particularly seniors that are on the CLEP list, I would recommend that they take a look at their college's list of acceptable CLEP exams and see what they might have just taken in school that would make it worth taking a CLEP exam. Because you can get full college credit at most schools for taking CLEP, and I'm finding that you can almost get through an entire year of college taking CLEP exams and save a lot of money.
Is CLEP paying you, is that your PSA?
No, but I wish I had known, because I could have saved literally tens of thousands of dollars. And so, I'd like to pass that on to somebody else that might take advantage of what I've learned a little too late. And I appreciate the presentation. And, and I appreciate the presentation that we just had. But I'm going to say something a little bit controversial. I have watched and listened and tried to learn for the last year what we're teaching and what we're doing and why we're doing it and, and what the results are that we're finding out. You all don't, you all know me a little bit. You don't know me really well. And the people that are hearing me out in TV land don't know me much at all. But I have an extensive background dealing with many, many, many people of all walks of life. And I love all people of all walks of life. And if you were to stop my kids with their friends group in the halls at Simsberry High School, you wouldn't believe the data that you saw on the screen because their friend group looks like the United Nations, but that doesn't reflect on the screen. And I would tell you more about myself so you would understand that this is coming from my heart. But I have always learned that while we are all different, we are also all very much the same. There are as many differences as similarities, but that, that is what makes us all unique individuals. And I have heard an awful lot this year about equity, which to me means equal outcomes, not equal opportunities. And I thought we lived in a land of equality, of, of equal opportunities for everybody to make the most of their own opportunity. I realize some students need more help than others. I have three children of my own that have all had different needs. And we do the best we can to help all of those. But I am trying to figure out what changed and who decided that it would be a better idea to emphasize all of our differences than our commonalities and think that that would have had a positive outcome. When in the history of the world did dividing people into racial, ethnic, religious, sexual, and class groups and pointing out the differences while suggesting some are oppressed and others are oppressors serve to bring people together? Rather than pit one another against each other and drive each other apart, why would we not come together as unique individuals and, and stop dividing everybody into their groups? We have been told that we are not teaching critical race theory in Simsberry. And, and we are not teaching critical race theory. Critical race theory is a, is a legal and college-level theoretical construct. But when we are looking, looking at everything through a racial lens, we are looking at it in a critical theory construct. I have heard more this year about equity and SEL than I have heard about math. But the math scores have fallen tremendously from what I had seen in one meeting because of COVID. If we were spending more time on math, we might understand that a half of a percent of eight students compared to a half of a percent of hundreds of students is very different. You can take the data, but it's not accurate analysis when you're looking at eight students versus hundreds of students and saying, oh, only one student from this group of eight made it into an AP class.
About 20 seconds.
So I think moving forward, we need to ask, are we asking the right questions? And are we looking at students as individuals? Or are we looking at them through their race, their ethnicity, their gender, their sexuality? Their income?
Thank you.
Thank you.
April Smith, 44 Climax Road. I'm really interested in knowing what went on during Equity Week. What were the questions that you were asking? I emailed the school before Equity Week to find out more about it. Didn't find anything about it. I read quite a bit. I read things that are given to educators all over America, all about CRT. I don't like what I'm reading. I think some of the books that they're promoting at Simsberry High School, some of the authors, I think some of these books are very racist. And I just, I, I think we're going down a very bad path. And the fact that there's no transparency, and it seems like, it was a very nice, you know, presentation, but it seemed like it was redacted for anybody that doesn't really know what's going on. And I just, you know, not telling us what's going on is, it's upsetting. I, I don't know what, what you're going to be producing in four years in these kids. But my question is, can I find out what kind of questions were asked during Equity Week for the students? So I can find out.
Evan Arsenal, 47 Knatch Road. This is my first time at a meeting like this. And I got to say that there was, there was a lot of good. I think, you know, everyone here is concerned about the children and have their best interests at heart. And it is easy when you look at a thousand little problems to, you know, focus in on the wrong things. And I think that that's what is happening from what I've observed, not just tonight, but over years and from talking to the community and others. I am, I am noticing that we talk a lot about, you know, numbers of people entering AP classes. But we, you know, Laura was right, April was right, absolutely. And the fact that we're not talking about math, we're, we're missing the basics. We're overlooking things. And I think right off the heels of, you know, COVID, I think we could all relate to the idea that sometimes, you know, when there's a lot of information, sometimes it's emotional information. Sometimes it's just the sheer volume of it. It, it can make you focus in on the wrong things. Like teachers, we have a teacher shortage. Why are we looking at skin color? We need to be hiring the most, the best candidates, you know, especially when we're short on staff. So I think that also what helps people learn is not necessarily the color of their skin or how, you know, they, they, you know, what they're being taught from a certain equity book, but whether they feel comfortable being there. One thing is that the math scores are down. That's, you know, that's important. But also what's down is the social skills. COVID has done a lot of damage on a lot of levels that we'll be spending decades learning about. And this year especially is the worst. I'm hearing all around town from parents saying, this was by far the worst year. Students are coming home, my teacher doesn't care, the teachers aren't paying attention. They, they didn't even, you know, listen to me. I mean, these are things that I think equity, you know, director should be concerned with. I think these are things that can be actual equity issues that be solved. So I just want, you know, us all to go into the summer thinking about this from a different angle and the fact that we might be focusing in on the wrong problems and just realigning to education, learning, math, writing, creativity. And when you focus in too much, when you magnify too much, you find problems. I, I am a, a big proponent of saying that when you look for problems, you find problems. It's not necessarily a good thing. You'll have time, thank you.
Hi, everybody. Stacy, goodness, Stacy Walzak, 35 Banks Road. Yeah, you know, I guess I share the same concern. Like, I think all of the work that's being done is good. I think we all come from a good place, but are we over-correcting for something? You know, perhaps there's something like more middle ground. I did, I guess, you know, I'm a numbers person. I get, I got a little bit lost because I'm wondering, like, you know, we want obviously children of minority to have access to these AP programs. It sounds like perhaps there is access, but maybe they don't have the support they need. And I'm just wondering if some of those issues like are at home? Because I'm thinking that a lot of the issues begin at home. I'm a new parent and I'm learning that for myself as my child grows up. And I'm like, oh goodness, what did you just say? We need to fix this, right? So I don't know. Those are just some kind of top-of-mind thoughts. And like, like I think parent commitment is huge. So I think like reaching out to the parents is like a big, big thing. Because if you don't have the parent commitment and you don't have, you know, home kind of holding these kids' feet to the ground and, you know, making them hold their end of the bargain up, like I, I don't know how much we could really do, you know, in the classroom. Like a teacher's, you know, portion of their day, right? So I think that's really all I want to say right now. It's been a long day. So, thank you all. I hope you're productive this summer. It sounds like you will be.
Thank you.
Hi, Mike Smith, 44 Climax Road. I just have two questions. How are we going to judge success on this? What, what, will we understand this? Is, is that possible? Will we be able to know how this is working? I mean, I watched this, it was a great presentation. I can't say that I understood a lot of it, but I, it was a great presentation. So I was just wondering, it does seem to me, like the other people, there's a lot of focus on race and not on the individuals. And we know, in other words, if, if there's more AP classes for minority students, that will, that means it's successful. That's what, it seems the mentoring part seems to be the best part of this. I think that's a great idea. Recognizing something early on and focusing on them. And I also agree, I think math, all these, you know, the, the hard sciences really should be pushed. Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, with that, our next Board of Ed meeting will be Tuesday, June 28th. It will be virtual, so please watch your emails for links. And with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn for this evening?
All those in favor? All right, thank you very much.